Please rise for applause. Roll call please.
Jeff Lanahan, first ward.
Bill Carlos, second ward.
Ann Berger, third ward.
Michael Sefon, fourth ward.
Stefan Krakauer, fifth ward.
Anne Cherchen, sixth ward.
Alicia Salvatore, town clerk.
Jim Nelson, attorney for the town.
John Basie, town supervisor. Welcome everybody to tonight's meeting. We have two presentations tonight. First presentation will be by the Climate Smart Task Force. And the second presentation will be by the town controller to give us an update on the town's finances. With that, I'd like to start the first presentation. Ann, who's giving the presentation?
Susan.
Susan?
Hi, thank you very much. Hi, everybody, thank you for being here. There's been a lot of back and forth about...
Susan, could you just introduce yourself and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I was going to start that way. So, hi again, everybody. My name is Susan Korn Tech. I am the chair of the Town of Poughkeepsie Climate Smart Task Force. And we are here tonight, as you all already know from the various emails and conversations, to talk to you about our proposals to use the grant funds that the task force has earned on behalf of the town. And we... What I'd like to do is I'd like to just start by making some overall introductory comments to make sure we're all on the same page about where this money came from and what it's supposed to be used for. Am I able to screen share? Looks like I am.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So, I just, I have this really short summary, which is similar to what I have in my email to the board members, that I just want to use to make sure we are all on the same page. So, as you know, the task force has been in existence since 2019, the town having registered as a climate smart community the prior year. We are dealing now with two different New York State programs, which are separate but parallel, and in which there is quite a bit of overlap. So, the town is a registered climate smart community. You see the column on the left. The focus of climate smart is on actions that reduce greenhouse gas emissions and create adaptation to climate change, or what we call mitigation, as in preventing as much climate change as we can, and adaptation, which is dealing with the effects that are coming no matter what we do at this point. This is a very formal process. It requires the town to be registered. It's required to have a task force with a coordinator. And there is a very, very detailed process by which we document our actions and have them reviewed. And of course, as you all know, the town did achieve initial, or what they call bronze, climate smart certification last fall, which was a very big deal. And we are now working towards the next level, which is called silver certification, where there is going to be a very big jump in terms of what is required. A lot of things in the pipeline, but not enough yet. But, you know, we will get there. So, along the way of working on all these climate smart actions, the town also, and the task force also completed actions which are applicable to the program called Clean Energy Communities, which, as the title would imply, has a focus on clean energy development, and it's administered through NYSERTA. This is a much simpler process. It does not require a specific task force. It does not require this incredibly complex portal. You simply complete the actions. You go online. You look up your town. You submit them. It's a very, very simple process. And since we have now completed four, what they call high-impact actions, the town has been, first of all, designated a clean energy community. That's official now. And we have also been awarded two grants. And the purpose of those grants is to further these kinds of goals that the group is working on. So, we have the $5,000 designation grant, which is a flexible-use grant, and a $15,000 action grant, for which there is some flexibility, but there is also, there are also some, what they call, pre-approved projects. So, the task force has been talking and working for a number of weeks to develop proposals to bring to you that we feel are excellent use of this money for the town and for these goals, that we feel will serve the residents of our town and our environment at the very best level that they can in terms of use of this money. So, we've sent you some information, and we're here tonight to talk about those two proposals. So, the first one that we'd like to talk about is for the smaller grant, the $5,000 designation grant, for which we are proposing to seed a green business initiative for our town business owners. So, I am going to turn the floor over to our task force member, Feza, who can introduce himself a little bit to you, who is himself a small business owner. Feza, like me, is a Ward Six resident. We also have with us tonight two individuals from the Green Business Bureau who will be here to answer your questions if necessary. So, Feza, I'm going to turn it over to you. Do you want me to, let me know if you want me to put anything on screen.
Okay. Thank you, Susan. Good evening, everyone. As Susan said, my name is Feza Okty, and obviously, live in the town of Poughkeepsie. We have a small business, North Blue Oster's, that is in the city of Poughkeepsie, very nearby. And in terms of this Green Business Bureau proposal, we've obviously sent you a lot of information. I'm not going to go over all the details that we sent you, but wanted to give you a brief overview of why we think, as a task force, that this makes sense for us to pursue. You know, in a nutshell, this is a tool that is going to help town businesses become more sustainable. And businesses want to become more sustainable for, you know, a number of different reasons these days, but, you know, reflecting the values of the owners, reflecting the values of their customers, and also, it makes economic sense. So, we did inquire to see if anything was going on on this level, on the county level, you know, in Dutchess County, and there's nothing going on on the county level that we can tap into. Did some research into what Ulster County is doing. And Ulster County is actually doing a much more involved program, where they've actually hired a staff person to run it. So, it's a much more expensive, much more in-depth program. And the tools that are provided by this Green Business Bureau program are really customizable based on the business's needs. And that's one of the things that we really liked about the tool, is that it's not just one single tool, but rather, it's a whole lot of different options where a business can go in and choose what they want to pursue that makes sense to them. I actually spoke with another coffee roasting company that actually uses this tool. They're down in South Carolina, but nonetheless, use this tool. And they were saying that they would like this tool because it's affordable. It allowed them to sort the different types of actions that they could choose to pursue by cost, by time, by impact, so it really helped them to prioritize what it is that they want to do. And it really is a great way to get started in this arena. I think a lot of small businesses also feel like they want to do something, but they don't know exactly what to do. So, this provides a lot of opportunities. It starts with an assessment process, so you can see where you are, and then move on from there into actions that you want to take. So, in terms of our conversation with Green Business Bureau, as you know from the materials we've provided, we are being given a discounted rate. So, from a business standpoint, it's not going to cost them that much to get involved. It is obviously completely optional than being forced into this, but it is a great opportunity that we'd be providing folks. And from some informal conversations we've had with some small business owners in the town, there are already a few that have said, hey, you know, this would be great. Sign me up. So, we are here to answer questions. We have Tom Pomataio, who's the president of Green Business Bureau, with us as well. If there are questions that you want me to ask of them. But, that's what we'd like to propose, or have proposed to you. So, I don't know if you have any questions at this point about that.
Is there an alternative to the electric vehicle if we choose not to take the vehicle?
That's the next one.
Oh, okay.
That's the other grant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, this is the $5,000 one. And this is like a green business challenge for the businesses in our area that if they wanted to participate, they could go and join the Green Business Bureau. And it's cost $200, but $160 would be taken out of the grant money. So, 33 businesses will be allowed to do this. And then they'll, they would have to just pitch in $40 to do this. And actually, when I went online with them, I was really impressed with it. It does an entire assessment of your businesses. It makes recommendation. And then the businesses, just like with climate smart, they earn points and levels. Eventually, you get your certificate and other things. And in some areas, it's a real, well, it's good for the businesses. It attracts customers. There are other areas in the country where this is a really big deal. And to be able to show that you're one of these Green Business Bureau people is very helpful and helps people get contracted and attract more customers.
So, is it geared towards a specific type of business, or is it any business?
I think it's any business.
Any business, yeah. I mean, certainly, Tom can speak in more detail about, you know, his company. But yes, you know, when you sign up, you indicate the size of your business based on number of employees. But pretty much, any business, that's one of the nice things about it, is that, you know, you do an assessment first for your business, and then you have all sorts of different actions that you can choose for your business that are not the same across all businesses.
But what, so, there's a $5,000 grant, and you're not going to give it to one specific business? You would just pay a portion of their membership?
Our proposal is that we can acquire a very large number. They are going to give us the annual memberships, if you will, at a discount. And we will, and because the membership cost varies with the size of business, based on number of employees, but just for example, if the businesses were typically, you know, I believe up to 10 employees, is that right, Feza?
Right.
We would be able to get about 33 memberships out of that. They would pay part, we would pay part. This would be for their first-year membership. But even once those were used up, they would offer continued discounts to Town of Poughkeepsie businesses in order to, you know, to help us really move this along.
So, what if you don't get the 30 businesses? Do you, does that, how long do you have to spend that money from the grant?
We did, Feza, go ahead, because we did disperse all those things.
No, there's, I mean, there isn't, there's no time constraint as far as Green Business Bureau is concerned. So, we can have this take as long as it takes. Obviously, we're hoping that we're going to get 30 businesses that are interested in pretty short order. As I said earlier, we've already got like three or four from informal conversations that are ready to go. But there's no cutoff. We don't lose the money. Let's put it that way.
Can it be used for anything else?
Well, once we take, once we propose to use this money for this purpose, it is given, it is a grant that is dispersed to the town based on that proposal. It needs to be used for that.
Okay. And then, so what exactly does a business get for the membership? Like, what does it get? A certificate if they comply, but what else?
Well, what they will have gotten is instruction, guidelines, assistance in setting up different things within their business that help them operate in a more environmentally friendly, sustainable, sustainable way that is going to be different from business to business. So, you know, for a coffee shop, it might be assistance in helping to figure out how to source better, you know, cups to use to be able to serve their customers. But for another entity, it might involve some sort of an energy audit, but then results in them saving money on energy. But that's one of the things that's nice about it, is that it's all customizable.
Yeah, and one thing I want to point out to you too, these grants are unusual because once they're accepted, we get the money upfront. So, it's not like we're paying for this, and once it's completed, then we get reimbursed. They're going to send us the money upfront.
The question to that is, Feza stated that the Green Bureau doesn't care how long it takes.
Right.
Does the state care how long it takes? All these grants usually have a deadline on them.
We have a deadline to put in the proposal, but we do not have a deadline to complete the project. It does not have to be completed within 12 months. I mean, this is, this is a grant to set up this project, and we will identify the project as we have proposed, which is that we don't have that kind of deadline, but that we will be able to do the following work. There's not going to be a timeline on it. And Ann spoke with the controller to talk about how this could be set up, and we've all agreed that the money itself would come to the town, would be held, and would be dispersed, not all at once, but would be dispersed in a few chunks so that we would pay a portion of it out. We would use up those memberships before we dispersed another portion to the Green Business Bureau. And as you saw in the proposal, there's all kinds of support that will come to us in terms of marketing this. I think it's really important also to note that this is not only becoming more sustainable, but a lot of these businesses are finding that they are having cost savings as a result of these actions. They're having cost savings. They are being preferred by customers because they are green. There's a lot of really good reasons for businesses to want to do this, but they just don't know how.
So, when they dispersed in chunks, so the money comes into the town...
Yeah.
And who's it being dispersed in chunks to?
To the Green Business Bureau.
And who is the Green Business Bureau? Like, a local group?
A private company.
A private company?
Tom, do you want to...
Sue, if I may, I'm on page three of the letter, and it says the Town of Poughkeepsie will purchase $5,000 of GBB licenses.
Yeah.
That's going to be through a grant from the Climate Smart Task Force. Right?
It is the grant, it is the grant money that we have earned by completing the actions that we've completed.
That's truly great, and you should really be complimented for doing that. Where is the money now?
The money is with the state, because we cannot get, the money is, we have earned the grant. The money and the funds are reserved for us, but they cannot be dispersed until we provide a proposal stating how we are going to use it that meets the appropriate criteria.
Okay, so, we're going to start...
It's not the usual grant process where you come up with a project, and then you try to get a grant so you can do it. We already have earned this money.
Okay, I understand. And by the way, a significant amount of compliments from me to everybody involved with your task force. It's a tremendous thing.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. We're going to purchase $5,000 of Green Bureau business licenses through the grant.
Yes.
Right?
Correct, yes.
Then what are we going to do with the licenses? We're going to sell them to businesses in the town? Or we're going to give them to businesses in the town?
The town, there is going to be, and Tom, you might be, Tom or Mary might unexplain this. There will be an online portal, if you will, because it's an online platform where Town of Poughkeepsie businesses can go to sign up. And we will be kept informed on our end of what businesses have signed up, and, you know, how many we've used, and all of those other statistics.
So, let me just add to that, that the, if we talk about, just for discussions sake, a business that has 1 to 10 employees, if we did not do this, then a Town of Poughkeepsie business would go to the Green Business Bureau website. They would sign up for their membership, and it would cost them $250. What we're doing is we're subsidizing that with this grant money so that instead, that Town of Poughkeepsie business is going to go to basically a special part of this Green Business Bureau website, not the one with the rest of the world. It's a special one for Town of Poughkeepsie. And when they go to sign up, it's going to cost them only $40.
Why not just, why not just give them the whole thing for free if we're getting the grant?
Well, we thought that some businesses would just sign up and not do anything with it. This way, you've got some skin in the game.
$40 worth?
Okay.
$40 worth of skin in the game.
I'm not understanding the simplest question here. We're going to buy $5,000 worth of these licenses.
Which is about $30.
Are we going to sell them to the businesses?
Without selling them.
We're subsidizing the membership.
So, we're going to give them to them?
We're subsidizing the membership.
We're paying a portion of the membership.
Why wouldn't we just give it?
Paying $200.
Well, if you give away 10, I'll be impressed. If you give away 20, I'll be more impressed. Why not just give them? Which is a grant.
Until it's gone.
I'm sorry, we can't really follow what you guys are saying in the room because it's not just one person speaking.
Yeah, that's what we're talking amongst ourselves.
Yeah. Now, what they're saying is they've...
Some persons are trying to learn what this is.
Yeah. They're saying that they would prefer we just give them the entire membership and not require the $40. So, and I mean, we could do that too.
Well, can anyone be denied access to membership, or no?
It's free money, because this is a grant, it's not a membership.
The thinking behind the $40, as Ann just mentioned, was to have some skin in the game so that there is a feeling of value. I mean, there's lots of research that's been done around, even if you have somebody pay just some token amount, then they feel as though there's some value. And that if you just say, well, hey, we're going to give this thing to you for free, then there's the perception of, oh, well, this must not be very, you know, worth very much because they're just giving it to me for free. So, this is a way to get people to really understand that there is value, that they're really being given something worthwhile here, and hopefully, to get people who are going to actually want to engage in this as opposed to just saying, oh, sure, it's free, fine, you know, I'll take one, and then not do anything with it, and then potentially have someone else who is interested be denied that free one, because there's obviously a limited number of these free ones that we can do, because there's only $5,000.
And it's a yearly, it's a yearly fee that they would have to pay, right?
Right. This would be for their initial year membership.
I'm fine with this.
I mean, if you were to offer me something that I don't want for free, I wouldn't take it. If you offer it to me for $40 off, and it's something that's significant, I, like, I'd pay the $250 if it makes sense. So, to me, it don't, I think if you have the money, you should use it to give it, give those to the businesses that want it. I don't think $40 makes a difference for most business owners. I mean, there is, I do believe that there is a point where if you do spend something on something, on an item, you'll be more involved, more likely to use it. I don't think $40 makes a difference at all. So, I would just give it to them to try and encourage more people to be involved, and more businesses. It just seems easier. I don't think you're going to have businesses that'll say, like, oh, yeah, I'd love to hang the, like, plaque on my wall. I'll take your $250 membership, I'm not doing anything. I would hope that people that do it would want to participate fully.
Well, they can't get the plaque without participating.
I know, but whatever.
Yes.
But the reality is, I would hope that people, maybe have a...
So, what if you needed $100? Like, you know, subsidize it that way.
No, I just, I just think you're getting $5,000, you get the memberships. Just give 20 businesses memberships. And that would be a huge step forward if you could accomplish that.
Okay.
I just, the $40 doesn't seem to make, it doesn't, especially these days. Dollars worth is different than what it was a couple of years ago. So, I think $40 doesn't move the needle enough. I would say use that money to give the memberships to businesses that are interested.
So, Stefan, may I ask you a follow-up question? Are you in favor, given that point that we're discussing, are you in favor of the proposal of doing this for our town businesses?
Well, I'm still listening. So, I'm, what I'm saying is, if you have $5,000 to give away, why not just give them the full membership versus having them pay 40? That was my point.
Well, yeah. We'll only be able to give 25 businesses, otherwise it's 33.
Well, but the math doesn't add up, so you're going to have money just sitting there in Charlie's account at, if you're taking $40 off. So, you can give a little bit more, but not that much more. But honestly, if you can find 20 businesses that want to do it and be fully engaged, why not just give it to them?
I mean, we certainly can do that.
Yeah.
You know, fewer, will then be helping fewer businesses also. But that's, I mean, we can do it that way.
You can do it that way.
When you say helping the businesses, does somebody go into the business and say, you could put these light bulbs in, and it'll save you this amount of money? Or if you change your electric service to solar power, that'll save you... Is there a person involved in going to the businesses? How, if you're going to make these, how does it work?
So, Tom, can you speak a little bit to how Green Business Bureau is actually going to support the individual businesses, I mean, or Mary for that matter?
Sure, no, I'm happy to. And by the way, thank you for allowing us to attend your town meeting this evening. And my name is Tom Pomataio, I'm the president of the Green Business Bureau. And so, to answer your question, the tool is designed so that a business person can use it without a consultant having to come in and actually do this. But, so, when Feza was talking about, there's an online assessment, and then there's online initiatives. So, it is designed in a way that makes it very available, affordable to small businesses because we don't have to have people come into the actual business. However, what we do do is we assign somebody to every single account that will start, help them start up, help them get going, help them understand the program. Again, it's an online program. And the reason why we're able to offer it at such a low price is because it's online. And so, it's a very easy tool to use. We have many, many customers that Feza has talked about, small to medium-sized businesses, which this program is designed for. It's designed for small to medium-sized businesses because most of those businesses don't have the same kind of resources that a large business would have, that they might be able to bring in consultants and things of that nature. And I think Feza mentioned, it's also applicable to many different businesses to the point where if you're a dry cleaner, you actually get specific initiatives for dry cleaning. If you're a restaurant, you get specific instructions as a restaurant. And you choose which kind of business you are to make sure you get those. So, we have training videos. We have people that are dedicated to accounts. And we, you know, so we have, we have resources that people can get access to when they have questions. But the way we support it, we typically support remote. We have, we have businesses that they use this in 60 countries, excuse, you know, 60 countries and six continents. So, it's a very widespread thing. And again, the model is, we want to help the businesses help themselves, but we provide them with a ton of support in the background to help them do it.
Tom...
That answers your question.
Tom, do you have any businesses locally in the Poughkeepsie area, Dutchess County, that are currently green businesses that you could point to as an example that would say, this is fantastic, this is what it's done for me?
Not in Poughkeepsie itself.
Dutchess County.
I apologize if I don't know every town that's in Poughkeepsie County, but I know in Westchester, we have customers. In other parts of New York, we have customers. I can provide, you know, listen, I have provided some information, Mary and I have, to the team. But we have, you know, we have customers across the state. And again, I apologize that I don't know what every county is.
Dutchess County.
Dutchess County. I can do some, a bit more research on that part.
Tom, if you're so along that line, how many years have you been doing business in New York State?
We've been doing business in New York State for over 15 years.
And do you have a website that we could take a look at that shows what exactly you're, I mean, you said it's all, it's all web-based, so...
Correct, absolutely. The website is greenbusinessbureau.com. And that, yeah, so just greenbusinessbureau.com will take you to the website.
And Green Business Bureau has been in business 15 years?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Now, how much of a commitment does the town have if they choose this proposal here? How many years do we have to be involved in this?
It's not the way it's structured.
When the money's gone, it's gone.
Yeah, I know. But I mean, so, we can do it one time, and if it doesn't work next year, we're not obligated to...
Oh, no, no, we're not obligated to do anything. No, no, no.
That's why I want to make sure.
When the money's gone, the money's gone. And if the businesses want to continue the membership after the first year, they can. They don't have to.
No, because it does seem like there's not much risk involved on the town, if you ask me. It seems like, you know, if anything, it's really beneficial to the, and it seems like you tailor it to the occupancies, you know, whatever the businesses are. So, I don't see much of a risk unless it's something I'm missing.
Yeah, and also, Tom, I've been asked to by churches. Do you have churches that come on as one of the businesses, or do they generally not?
Generally not. We have nonprofits. I don't know that we have any churches. But they're a building, they have facilities, so technically they could. I don't have, you know, we didn't develop a specific, you know, what we call an industry pact for churches. But there's no reason why they can't. And, you know, so I, I don't have any, I don't have any that I can point to that from a church perspective have done that. But I'd be happy to work with them and I'd be happy to, to kind of walk through it personally with them.
I just have a question. So this money is already earmarked for this, like that was, the grant is for this.
The grant, the grant is earmarked for the town. And we are proposing to use the money for this purpose.
Okay.
Can we use it for, sorry.
Was there any other ideas you tossed around?
This is, this is our, this is our, let me back up and say, this is something that we have wanted to be, to be able to do.
Okay.
Is, is to support green business in, in the town. And it's not something we've had a means of doing in the past, let's put it that way. So if you look, for example, at the Climate Smart actions, there's a lot of stuff in Climate Smart about green business. And I wanna point out that, you know, both of these proposals that we wanna talk about tonight will result in additional Climate Smart points towards the next level of certification as an added benefit. There's a lot, there are several actions in Climate Smart about green business. So we haven't had the means to do something like this before. So when we found out that we were getting the grant, we, and because this smaller of the two grants is a very flexible, creative thing, but within, within that structure of that it has to be something that's gonna have a positive impact on, you know, climate issues, it seemed like a perfect opportunity to us to create, you know, to go look, to look for how we could use the money to support this idea. And when we looked at the Climate Smart information, actually, Green Business Bureau platform is in the Climate Smart program as a potential resource. So it's, it's mentioned there as, as something that one, yeah, that you can do. So I hope that answers your question. We, you know, this, this was, it came along and we said, wow, here's this idea that we've been wanting to pursue. We haven't had a way to do it because, you know, this is, and as you said when you came to our meeting, it's a group of volunteers. We really do not have the wherewithal to run a great green business program ourselves for the town. You know, we're not like Ulster County where we have a paid person who can do this full-time. So this is an opportunity to connect our town business owners with an established, proven, you know, stream where they can, they can get some help doing this.
Sure, makes sense.
What else can it be used for, other than the memberships?
You mean the money?
Yeah.
Well, this is the proposal we've put together.
Okay.
It could be used, you know, for, I'm sure, lots of other things. But this is what we've identified as something we think should be a priority and very, very beneficial for our town business owners.
Okay, so let me just ask that again. What else could it be used for?
It could be used for any creative thing that someone would like to use it for as long as it fits the, the requirements, that it must be something that demonstrates improvements in emissions and use of clean energy and all of those things. It can't just be anything in the world. It has to be something that furthers the goals of the Clean Energy Community Program.
What are some of the other things that you got, that your group, that the group looked at as options, other than the membership?
For this smaller grant, this is something that we've been developing. We didn't really talk about other options because this is what we feel is important. And it's a great opportunity for this small grant. This grant could be added to the other grant if we wanted it to. You know, for example, if we wanted to also put it towards getting ourselves into an electric vehicle. But again, I can't stress enough, we think this is a wonderful, beneficial opportunity for the town. And I wanna stress that it would be taking leadership on the town's part. It would be, it would be great PR for the town, just like it was great PR to get Climate Smart certification. It would really help us be on the map as a, as a, as a town that is taking leadership. And, you know, we think that's very important.
So when I was on their meeting last week, I was thinking the same thing around, you know, how important this is to, to people. So for me, it's not terribly important that I shop at a store that is working towards green energy goals. It's just not on my radar as much as some other things. So, but based on what the task force said, there are a lot of businesses, and Fez spoke to it, you know, he has a small, he's a small business owner too. There are a lot of small businesses in the area apparently that do want to be certified or are, would like to be recognized as a green business, business.
Are there, are there any currently, Tom, I guess it's this time, are there currently any businesses in the town of Poughkeepsie that are green business certified or part of the Green Business Bureau?
Not currently, other than, you know, Fez has, has been using it. And so I haven't checked how, how well he's done on his scoreboard.
So he's a member of the, or he's got a membership?
He has a membership, that's correct.
Are there any other businesses in the town that have memberships currently?
Now, to be clear, we, we gave Fez the, the membership as part of his analysis to understand, you know, how the tool works and how it could be applied. So we do not have any others that have just, you know, found us as, as many customers do and many of our members do, that they find the website, they're doing research, they come to us, they become members. So we don't, we, you know, we don't have any that currently would be either in Poughkeepsie. And I, I will check the rest of the county itself, but the town, I don't, I don't believe so because I did a search prior.
And to me, sorry, Tom.
But I would say about, one thing about the business, about what the, you know, what this does for business and what we see and what we hear from our members, and we have a very active user community, is that from a small to a large business, it is about the sustainability aspect for a lot of people when they get into it. But I think as Susan mentioned earlier, or Anne, that the, that every time someone does initiative, it does have an impact. So you're going to be creating, we're gonna have a tool that every time they follow one particular initiative, it will have a, an impact on carbon calculation, it will have an impact on reduction of waste, saving of water, whatever the, whatever initiative that they choose to do. But it also has a bottom-line impact on their business in terms of their operational efficiency and saving them money. And we have plenty of examples of things in small, at florish shops, doing three initiatives, spending two hundred fifty dollars doing three initiatives in three months and saving twelve hundred dollars on the bottom line of their business. For small business, that's, that's impactful, right? And that's just three initiatives out of the potential over four hundred of them. So, you know, I, I, I just wanted to make that point. But, you know, the direct answer to your question, within the town of Poughkeepsie, right now, we do not, other than the fact that we, we gave one to Fez because we wanted to be very transparent and open about how the system worked and we can help them with their evaluation.
But to piggyback on that, I just wanna be clear that, you know, I felt, we felt as the task force that it was important to actually see this product in action as opposed to just talking about it. So that was the rationale for asking for login credentials to be able to actually go in and play around with the system to see how it works before coming to you with a recommendation.
Fez, I don't wanna put you on the spot, but since you've been using this so far, have you saved anything or?
I have, I have not used it in that context. I have used it in the context of trying to understand and see how the system would work. So I have not sort of, I have not had my business owner's hat on in terms of going through all the steps as more, as more, more as it was to just say, okay, oh, look, this is how the assessment piece works. And oh, this is how you can choose then different initiatives. Just to understand the interface, to see, is it easy to use, does it make sense, that type of thing.
So when you did the assessment, anything early showing something that you possibly could do?
I have not used it to that extent, no.
Okay.
I, and I, I did wanna reiterate, we have had very informal conversations with a few town business owners, people that we know, who are very enthusiastic and ready to go that they would do this. So I, and I think that's very positive. And I think, I think that's part of our job as this group is to bring these opportunities, you know, to our residents and business owners. That's, that's one of the things we need to be doing, to help, to help the town as a whole move along. You know, the residents, the business owners, they're all part of the town. That's part of our mission here is to help the town as a whole move in this direction.
No other questions? All right, Susan, you go on to the next one.
Okay, good.
Okay, so you want, you guys wanna move on, you wanna move on? Okay, so I wanna just, I don't wanna keep Tom and Mary here. So if you have no further questions for them, I will say thank you very much for both of you and we'll talk soon.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you. Take care. Bye-bye.
So turning our attention to the second proposal, which is the larger of the two grants. It's called an action grant because it was earned in response to our completing a specific action, which was the community solar campaign that we did. And it is, it, it is required to be used for something that is directly related to clean energy. And there are a few what they call pre-approved projects, which are very easy, you know, to, to get approval for because they are pre-approved. And of those projects, our feeling is that the most impactful thing we can do with this money is help the town do its first EV purchase. So we have been working very, very hard on this. And I'm going to turn the floor over to our member, Rich Levine, who is a Ward Two resident. And I just wanna take the opportunity to also mention that our, our member, Joan Freeman, who is a Ward One resident, worked very, very closely with Rich on this proposal. She's unable to be here tonight because one of her parents passed away a couple of days ago. So Rich is going to handle this information for you. And he has some introductory comments before he gets to the, the meat of the proposal. So thank you, Richard.
Hi, I'm Rich Levine. I just wanna say, I've been a Dutchess County resident for fifty-three years. Thirty-nine of those now, the last thirty-nine in the town of Poughkeepsie, Ward Two. I worked for IBM and Microelectronics for thirty-eight years. My wife sometimes calls me a nerd or a geek. But I, I'm, I love technology, so. I just wanna make some comments about EV transition to electric vehicles. So far, nineteen countries, including the US, across the five percent of purchases being EV. We just recently did that. Other countries way before us. This is always considered the tipping point for adoption of technology. It was for cell phones, for TVs, for internet. You get past that five percent and it, and it's, it takes off after that, like an S-shaped curve. And in fact, the AAA did a survey of their, of their members and found that twenty-five percent of them say that their next purchase will be an EV vehicle. So the industry is heading towards what they think is fifty percent EV by 2030. And the infrastructure will follow suit. GM announced it will be a hundred percent EV by 2035. And some vehicles, other companies have, have said before that. As a further example, the industry will spend five to six hundred billion dollars on EVs versus a far less powered amount for gas-powered vehicles. And that's gonna end up being just window dressing on gas vehicles. EV vehicles are uniquely positioned to reduce CO2 because electric motors make substantially more efficient, are, to terms of more efficient than internal combustion engines. They convert over eighty-five percent of the electrical energy into motion compared to forty percent for a gas-powered vehicle. Also, the New York electrical grid, by, by having nuclear hydro and solar and soon to be wind power, making it only about thirty percent of the CO2 usage or, or CO2 emission against the national average. So we have more efficient cars being fed off of one of the best grids worked in the country. What you'll see in the next chart is how the town can make a very cost-effective entry into EVs and start to get ready for these coming changes so that their future decisions are based on usage and data on how that car performs in its function. So Susan, can you put the charts up? Well, we can go through this, skip to the next chart. First, first I wanna mention that the, the vehicle cost will be reduced by this own grant of fifteen thousand dollars of a purchase incentive. There's also my SOTA incentives that you'll see. The town will see that I'm getting fuel cost savings, which we'll show you in the chart. Excuse me, EV cars require very normal servicing. You're not, you're not changing oil, you're not working on a cooling system. They're much easier to service. And like I said, it's an excellent opportunity for the town to test an EV vehicle for future, future purchase options. We have suggested a general use vehicle for town hall. But I'm open to suggestions wherever a vehicle will have multiple users and, and an opportunity to be charged maybe on weekends, depending on how much mile it just put on the car. So let's go to the next chart. This is a little, I'll go through this quickly. We can look for more detail. But what Joan did here was say, if I take my typical gas-powered vehicle at forty-two miles a gallon with an MSRP of twenty-five thousand dollars, she works through annual fuel costs at twenty thousand miles a year, gasoline price, and what the year, one five and ten-year ownership costs are. And then gives you some choices of, of various EVs that are available now. These, these generally have EV ranges of about, well, two-twenty-six to two-hundred-and-fifty miles. So if it was a vehicle that was being used a hundred and fifty, a hundred and seventy-five miles, it could be a week, it could be plugged in over the weekend or you could, we could find a two-hundred-and-twenty boat, just plug it in overnight. When you go through it, you can see the fifteen thousand dollar Climate Smart Action Grant. There's a DEC rebate of seventy-five hundred dollars on electrical vehicles and a my SOTA rebate of two thousand dollars. So when you look at the net purchases, the various vehicles run from sixty-five hundred to fifteen thousand for a vehicle against the twenty-five thousand dollar net purchase. Again, we talked about twenty thousand miles of annual drive. There's an assumption of power costs. But the annual fuel cost would be about a third, maybe a little less of the fuel cost for a gasoline-powered car. Insurance would be similar. Maintenance would be minimal. I mean, you might rotate the tires and that's about it. So you can see the one year, the cost of ownership gets relatively small. So I'm open to any questions you have. And maybe we should leave this chart up if it's about the chart or about anything. I think Susan and I would love to take your answer, take your questions. Uh, I think Susan and I would love to take your answer, take your questions.
Okay, I, I have a couple of small ones. You say there's no maintenance on the vehicle, it's electric, I understand that. But what about brakes, alignments, all of the regular things that have nothing to do with the motor in a car? Is it a transmission? The, the electric motor goes directly to the drive, there's no transmission?
Correct.
Okay, so you still have the drive part of the car. We aren't there that.
The electric motor drives the, drives directly, um, because I, if, if you've ever driven an electric vehicle, I've got a-
Golf cart.
Hybrid. They-
I've driven golf carts, it's an electric vehicle.
Yeah, what you tend to do, of, of the latest electric cars, when you take your foot off the gas, the, the engine is being charged by your, by your slowing down. So, so, um, you start to slow down a lot faster, and once you get into rhythm of rolling, of driving it, you tend that when you see a red light, you take your foot off the, the gas much earlier, and you sorta drift into the stop, um, so you, you-
I think the chance makes-
Use brakes a lot less.
But, but you have zero, you have zero maintenance cost for, for a vehicle, so here's the thing. Unless you don't drive it at all, you are A, gonna definitely wear your brake pads. B, your ti- your tires, so, so there's gotta be some sort of cost for maintenance in there. Yeah, the other question I would have regarding maintenance is what is the lifespan of a battery? And what does that cost to replace? Cause that would have to be factored in, correct?
Uh, yeah, I, I, I really can't talk to the lifespan of batteries. I, you know, I think, I think the, the data is still out on them, um-
Most, most EVs though have eight-to-ten-year warranties on the battery, so if there's any issue, you know, over eight years, there's, it's covered.
Okay, and that as far as the brakes, if, if you have to do the brakes at, uh, seventy, eighty thousand miles, I, I mentioned before that the tire rotation will be one of the things you have to do, um-
But, but that would mean-
Does the electric drive act as brakes?
No, it charges the vehicle.
Not as a brake, but they slow you down.
Okay.
They don't stop you completely, they slow you down because what the, what the motor does is go in reverse to start charging the batteries.
Okay, but that's not any different than, I mean, if you, if you have your car in gear, you take your foot off the accelerator, having it in gear sort of slows it down. If you put it in neutral, it, it rolls faster.
Every car's gonna have some type of maintenance cost where it's electric or gas, so-
Right.
That's the material at this point.
Right, should be factored in.
They're just saying it's lower, because it's just-
No, but they're saying it's zero.
I think for the first year is what that was, cause as the years go on, I think they put some into it, is my guess. One-year ownership cost, five-year ownership cost.
Yeah, because you, obviously you don't need the oil changes. There's fewer cars to break down, so they, they are lower maintenance.
They, they are definitely, they, they, like they said, there's no transmission. The, what, what, what you get is if you get just a front-wheel drive, there's an electric motor in the front, uh, tied directly to the wheels. If you have four-wheel drive, there's one engine in the back and one engine in the front.
So, and you're, you're correct that there is maintenance associated with tire rotation. Um, I happen to own a Nissan Leaf that, and had for three years and has over forty thousand miles on it, and the only thing we've ever done is rotate the tires, and then just within the past couple of months, had to replace the tires. But that's the only service we've had to do on it.
And it's a Nissan Leaf, is what you said?
But, uh-
Correct.
Fourth choice on the list.
Man, I think the only difference between your car and my car, as far as maintenance, is I've had oil changes. But I mean, I've only rotated the tires on my car, my car's three years old. I've rotated the tires, I've, other than that, I've done oil changes, and that was like thirty bucks a pop. The, um, the other, the other thing though, the cost of acquisition, the, if we're getting it for ninety-five hundred, I guess it is what it is, but we, we, we have looked at this before. In the town, the police depart, we buy vehicles for the police department.
Right.
And those vehicles get a lot of mileage. But at a certain point, they're not, they're not as useful or appropriate for the police department, but I believe we still do it, where we take the decals off, take, take it back down to a regular vehicle, and then put that into our fleet. And one of the issues before, that when we looked at this, was that we're not buying a lot of vehicles for departments, we're buying trucks for highway or water sewer, we're buying heavy equipment. But I don't think we're buying a lot of actual vehicles for, for the town, so-
Can I take this chart down so we can see each other, is that okay, or do you guys?
Yeah, fine.
That's fine.
But, so, so we don't, I think a lot of the vehicles we have, we have zero acquisition cost at this point because they're getting, they're getting rotated back in. If we were to sell them, we wouldn't probably get good value necessarily because we're selling a car with high miles. We know, we know what that car is, so by rotating it into our fleet, we're using those vehicles. And a lot of these vehicles, I don't think get driven thirty, forty, fifty thousand miles a year. I think they're, you know, a town employee works within the confines of the town, so they're driving short distances.
Right.
So that, that I know has been an issue in the past as far as the viability of this because to buy a car just to have it is one thing, but as a town, we, we, we buy things based on what we need, not what we want.
So i- if I may address that. We understand, thi- this is really, what we've put in front of you here is examples. It does not have to be a Town Hall vehicle. I mean, in an ideal world, an EV would be perfect for a Town Hall vehicle. But we do understand, because we did the fleet inventory and all that, what the normal procurement process and sort of handing down process has been in the town. And, um, I've been privy to some jokes with the municipal director where they talk about the cars that they end up with years later. Um, there is, this car could be for-
Is the municipal director not satisfied with his vehicle, is that what you said?
No, it's just, it was kind of a funny conversation, but-
I like jokes.
But we, but we understand that this has been how the town has, uh, proceeded in the past to acquire new cars. There is, we could, this car could be for the police department. It, it could be, you know, it, it's, it's-
Could it?
Yes, it could, so I-
It could be a detective car, it could be the truck.
Detective car, but the detective cars are also rotated through that way.
Okay, so we, we did-
But everybody needs to-
We did, we did speak with people from some other municipalities who have taken this step. So for example, City of Poughkeepsie, I know we don't have this, has some Nissan Leafs, I believe, they're using for their, their parking, people who go around, you know, checking the meters and all that. There's a lot of idling. Um, we spoke with Fishkill, we also spoke, I also spoke with the Climate Smart Coordinator in Beacon, where they did purchase a car for the police department. Um, and so it, it has been done, it can be done. This proposal, conceptually, is not as much about which car should it be and who should drive it as it is about the transition to electric vehicles and an opportunity to hea- help the town take that first step because there is a pile of money available to do it. There is the grant and the incentives, which total about twenty-five thousand dollars. So there is an incredible opportunity to do this and to have the cost savings through the money and incentives. So again, this, this is much more about the concept of helping the town to take that step because the transition to electric vehicles is coming, it is coming.
And, and, and it, and what we would, you know, really like to have, the town evaluate the car, the various drivers tell us to people what we think, what they think, so that in the future, you can decide where maybe an, an electric vehicle makes sense. And, and with some information, some background.
So I think what, I think what generally makes sense though for the town is when we have a need, we, we fill it. So the electric vehicle, I guess, I haven't thought that through, but I guess if there is a vehicle that would be appropriate for a police department, where it could be turned into a police cruiser, I guess that would be something interesting to take a look at. I'm not sure if they've, if that end of the automobile market has developed, because I know-
I'm not sure.
But if, if that would, that would be a situation where it would be a car that would be used for high miles, and you'd have a huge savings, like it would go off your chart. But I, i- if there are vehicles, to get a vehicle and, and kind of pry it into the police department, say, here, have somebody use it over there, or to get a vehicle for everybody to try out, doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But if we, if we, if we can designate a need and then find an electric vehicle that fits, I, like, it makes complete sense, and I agree with you, if there's money out there, we should go take it cause somebody else will. And I do think some point down the road, there'll be more electric vehicles than gas vehicles. I'm not sure where, I know they projected, and I'm not always convinced that their projections are correct because when, right now, I think everybody would buy one because you, you get a small, you get a home equity loan to fill up your tank of gas. A few years back, people kind of, I think, started to go back to buying the huge vehicles and weren't so concerned about the gas costs. So I think there's an ebb and flow, but if there are vehicles, it would be appropriate for a police department, and I think our chief would be somebody to talk to about that, then, then I, I, I think it would make sense. Getting one just to get it doesn't make complete sense. If the total cost to buy it is ninety-five hundred, and then you add that five thousand dollars in, so it's forty-five hundred, then I guess it doesn't hurt to have it and have one in our fleet of cars. But again, we've looked at it a million different times o- over the years, and from a point of view of maintenance and need, it never really fit to go like too big with it. But I appreciate the fact that you guys have done all this work, and again, secured, at least found the funds to secure to do it. But I would like to actually, rather than just go out and say, let's buy a car, figure out, this is where we could buy it. And if there's a police cruiser that's comparable to what we use right now, that's an electric vehicle or a hybrid, maybe that's an ideal, an ideal situation.
Well, just in, in passing, I spent this afternoon on the state website for purchasing. Officer for State.
You had a dull afternoon.
And I specifically went after the state bids for electric vehicles, figuring, we can't just go buy one, we'd have to put it out to bid ourselves, or we have to go from a state bid or municipality. And I found there is a pickup truck. It's a Ford F-150 body, has two electric motors, it's four-wheel drive. You choke on the price, it's designed for police departments. It's not a Nissan Leaf, it's an F-150.
I was about to say that.
And it's got an electric motor in the front, electric motor in the back. Uh, I haven't found any department that has one, but they have them. I did not find anything on the state bid where we could buy a small Nissan Leaf or whatever they're called, uh, and try it. We just can't go-
There are some police departments that are doing-
Excuse me, Susan, we as a municipality just can't go out to a dealership and buy a car. We can't do it that way. We either put it out to bid ourselves, or we go off the state bid.
Right.
Period, one or the other. So I wanted to see if there was a small car on the state bid that we could use. I'd have to report honestly, right now, my search is not done. I did find the F-150 pickup truck with two electric motors, designed specifically for police work. But we could buy two police cruisers for what that pickup truck would cost. Which though, I, I have, this is the way of the future. You know, think about what everybody said about Ford when he came out driving a buggy that he had. This is the future, it's gonna go electric. It, in our best interest, the people we represent, to get in there and start thinking about this stuff and where we can put it. And don't make the mistake other people have made. We're spending other people's money. They got enough to pay for it without us spending their money on stupid stuff. So I think, A, I couldn't find a small electric vehicle on the state bid. So if we take this to the next step, we're gonna have to put a bid out. This, this, this car's out there.
Their, Beacon did get a car through the state system for their police department. I'm blanking right this minute on what model it was.
Just before I came here, the search, and I didn't come across one yet.
No, they, they did get it, they did get it.
An actual police cruiser, or, cause like, City of Poughkeepsie, we don't, we don't charge our residents or our visitors to park, City of Poughkeepsie does, so they, they can use one of those cars. We wouldn't have that same- Need because we don't, we don't have people going around and checking the meters. But if, but if it's a police cruiser that has all the things that a police cruiser needs, and that would, I mean, that to me is very interesting because that, that's where we, I think the bulk of our miles are probably police cars, that would be my guess.
Both of our miles are police cars, but the police car also runs twenty-four-seven, is one of the problems at this point.
Yeah, I'm not- They're never done.
Yeah, they're running-
I'm not sure that's a good choice.
They can just coast and charge while they're coasting into the red light.
And if they're saying you're gonna get a vehicle of that nature, you're talking a lot of money.
Right, that, but that's what I say, that's where our need is, the, you know.
It's not a good, that's not a good match because of the twenty-four-seven and also all the electronics that are on board.
Yeah, they're really-
Suck the energy.
Right, but that's why I say that if we, we, I think we need to find where the need is, not just buy a car and have everybody try it out.
Okay.
That's, that's my honest opinion, because it, even if we spend a dollar, or we spend ninety-five hundred, or we spend a hundred thousand, it should be based on a need. So I do believe that there's gotta be a need within the town system for it, but just getting it to have it is, doesn't make sense. Like I said, I, the, somewhere in that, somewhere in that, I feel like the police, eventually they will come out with a police cruiser that is electric, that is, that is worthwhile getting and affordable, and somewhat affordable. If that's not there yet, then I, I think we should look around for what the need is before we pull the trigger on anything, so that it's something that actually gets used. We don't, we don't want it to sit up at, at Town Hall and be parked.
I just wanna make a comment, in, in all the research that I've been doing, um, the prices of batteries are falling, but right now, what you're seeing is demand far outstripping supply. The F-150 Lightning that Ford just came out with, I think they stopped taking orders after two years because they've sold out completely. Uh, the same is true of a, a lot of other electric cars, they are just, they can't meet the demand. And so they're selling them at, at sticker price, which-
Well, along those lines, I actually looked at buying myself a truck recently, looked at the cost and realized that now's not the time to buy, so I didn't buy the truck. That's, that's, that would be, that would be another concern that you raised, is it may, it may be a bad time to buy something.
However, however, the, some of the cars that, that Joan had on that, they're supplying far more cars, electric cars than, than, uh, than right now Ford is or General Motors is. Hyundai and, and Nissan are, have been selling a lot more because they sell a lot in Europe and where the demand is even greater than here.
And while I understand that this is the way the town has done this, and I understand the reasons why they start with the police department and sort of hand them down, I understand all of that. I also feel like it's okay to do something different if there's an incredible opportunity and cost savings. Because a vehicle used in a different way from the police department, or at least in a different way from a cruiser, um, would still be available at a very low cost with all of this money and would save the town money over time in fuel and maintenance over all these other cars that are being used anyway. So I, I still see it as an incredible opportunity. I understand we've always done it that way, but this is, this-
The, the only thing I'm suggesting is we actually identify a need before we buy it. Just to buy a car and then figure out where we're gonna use it, that, that does not, that doesn't make a lot of sense.
But the other cars are being used. There, there are cars for the staff at Town Hall that are used every day. They, they don't just sit there, they are used.
I know in Fishkill, they, they use them.
The supervisor uses it, the town clerk uses it, there's-
Right.
The town board says the, uh-
Police convention.
Police, the town board uses it, yeah.
There's, there's the building people and the zoning people, and you know, they, they all drive around. Janet McHugh in Parks Department, you know, she drives around. I mean, there, there are people that are, that are on the road. That the town is paying for that fuel and paying for that maintenance. We're not inventing a car where one does not exist.
Anybody have anything else at this point? Susan, um, and Rich, thanks very much for your presentation tonight, and we will get back to you once they make their decision there, as soon as possible, because I know there is a deadline to-
Yeah, there is a deadline.
There is a deadline.
Like, first or second of August, so really by the next meeting, we should have a decision what we're gonna do.
So, I'd like to make one more point-
Can you use the money for?
So I wanna, I wanna make that point before we close. There are a couple of other, quote, pre-approved projects for this other, you know, for this larger grant. The, the second one, which we think would be the next best use of the money, would be to get an additional charger installation. No, I don't have figures on it. This would be completely separate from the grant that you guys already have for the chargers at Town Hall. And we have a couple of ideas of where another charger could go in the town where we think it would be very, very valuable. In particular, again, we, we think the idea of an EV is the best use, but as another plan, the people up at Peach Hill are very interested in running power from the utility pole up there, so they can do an electric, probably more like, you know, a golf cart type of thing, because they would like to make Peach Hill more accessible to people who cannot walk up the mountain. And by getting a vehicle like this, they would, they would make it accessible to people. They would need to run electricity, and they would, they would do a shed, and they would do a charger and all this. And they don't have the money or the means to, to do all of that. They could probably put some funding together, but this would be an option for how this money could be used as well. Another pre-approved project is LED streetlights, but the town has already done that, so that's not really an option for us. Another pre-approved project is a solar installation. We could talk about putting a small, a small solar installation in another location on municipal property. Again, we would like this to be something that would have a lot of visibility to the residents, demonstrate leadership for the town, and, and set an example, if you will, for, for other towns, and for businesses, and for residents. We'd like very much for it to be something pretty visible. So those are some other options that we could discuss. But again, the task force has, has a consensus that this would be an ideal use of this money. And we would get the most bang for the buck because of the incentives.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan.
You're welcome. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your effort.
Yes, the whole group of you, the whole task force, thank you very much.
Mr. Amburger, you're next. Last but not least, Charlie.
Good morning.
Hi.
Good morning.
We're halfway through the year. I just wanted to do a quick review where we are, where we stood so far this year. You all got the handouts. You know how, I'm not very tech savvy, so we're using paper.
It's a waste of money.
So the first page is year-to-date budget. A fund fifty-two percent, not too bad. Everybody else is under. The DB fund, sixty-five, that's the highway. I went to find out why it's so high. And we have Mark bought a vac truck and a front-end loader. It's all going through chips, so chips is gonna reimburse us. It was like six hundred thousand. So that sixty-five is gonna go down like fifty-two percent. He was a little high, actually, this winter. It wasn't a lot of snow, it was a lot of small ice storms.
A lot of salt.
A lot of salt, and a lot of overtime, so his budget was pretty much maxed on that snow removal. But otherwise, we're all in pretty good shape, year-to-date budget-wise. Second page is the revenue. As of June first, I just wanted to show you mortgage tax and the sales tax, two big non, you know, property tax items, revenue items. So you can see sales tax has already hit budget numbers, and we're only through May with these numbers. Mortgage tax is at six seventy-seven. We just got the June's report yesterday from the county. It's another hundred and twenty-one thousand. So that puts us, what, seven, almost eight hundred thousand through half the year. So again, we're in good shape.
For the sales tax, do we normally get more in the first half of the year, or is it kinda evenly spread out, so we're, we're gonna be way ahead?
What, what they've been doing, we are set for one point nine million under the county plan that went back years ago. But what happens at the end of the year, if they're over in sales tax, they do a split amongst the towns based on population. So in March, we get a large pop from the previous year.
So that chunk comes in, and more, so that chunk came in, so.
Yeah, for last year, we were.
That unfair plan from a number of years ago undercuts us as far as what we should really be getting.
Well, the change, that they changed, you're right, that was the unfair plan, but later on, they put in this escalator.
Yeah, which helps a little bit.
Helps a lot.
Well, yeah, it helps a lot, but it doesn't get us what we should.
The first year was a hundred thousand dollars, then it went to about a hundred eighty, and now, now it's up to almost a million. So it's a big jump. That's one thing to look at. Mortgage tax is monthly, it's a month behind. Sales tax is mostly here.
Yes, quarterly. I was on the New York website, trying to get retirement numbers and whatnot, and sales tax is up seventeen percent with New York State. So again, we're in good shape, budget-wise.
I know that line, the sales tax being up seventeen percent is nice, but being a county and a state that both kicked off the guest, the guest tax, that may affect our numbers big. So we may see, may see, we have to really look at the next quarter.
That's just because everything's more expensive. Probably is, right?
Well, I mean, sales tax has been, it's been on a steady climb over the years, and that probably has something to do with it.
Yeah.
But I think a lot of purchases, just the way they purchase, it's up, and it's been going up quite a bit.
Yeah.
And then the last page is just some items that stuck out on the year-to-date budget. Obviously, gas is up sixty-five percent, we're only fifty percent through the year. Electric, medical, I just wanted to bring these out, because this year's gonna be a tough budget year. Give you just heads up, we're negotiations with three different contracts, with unions. Obviously, you hear all the eight percent inflation rate. Retirement is probably gonna go up. You can see the, the way the market's going, so they just dump that on us and raise our percentage. So that's all. I just wanted to give a quick review, if anybody has any questions.
Yeah, Charlie, just to add to, I got the email today, is, you know, that the Joint Water Board, our budget, we had a discussion last month, price of chemicals. There's gonna be a shortage on the budget line for, for Joint Water Board for chemicals, four hundred nineteen thousand dollars this year out of our budget. That's a huge number. Just goes to show you, Charlie says eight percent, some of the chemicals are up fifty, sixty, seventy percent. And we're budgeted, so we are gonna have a serious budget shortfall down there, and that's something that we have to look at going forward here, because just watching what's going up, you're gonna see healthcare is definitely gonna go up, you're gonna see retirement, unless the market makes a quick one-eighty and shoots back up, you're definitely gonna see that the loss that the state's gonna take in the market for retirement, that number's gonna go up too. I mean, so it's something that everybody thought that this would be a better year, because the economy was sort of changing. It definitely, after the pandemic, is going the other way. It's gonna be probably one of the toughest budgets we're gonna have to deal with.
Speaking of what Jay said about the Joint Water Board, Randy was saying, he can't even get a contract for chemicals. They'll do a month-to-month pricing. He couldn't get a quote for like six months. They won't give him quotes. It's a month-to-month.
The budget's down there for three hundred thousand, we're at six hundred. We're three hundred, three hundred thousand short on the budget now, down there.
Now, I, I've been in a gas station where you, the, the price was flickering, literally going up as I was standing there. So, yeah, that's the world that we live in right now.
It's something we have to keep in the back of our mind, as we, as we purchase, every dime counts.
Yeah. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Jay, also. Anybody have any questions, Phil?
Thank you.
That comes the end of our committee. The whole presentations, they have reports.
Charlie just did finance.
Technology?
Yeah, well, June was a quieter month. People are on vacations. So for the website, we had seven thousand users, and six thousand were new users, so that's nice. And on our email subscription, we had a hundred and eight new subscribers. So we have a total of six thousand fifty-five subscribers. And other projects that they've been working on is they continue to do infrastructure work, and we're working out with Verizon to convert our copper lines over to fiber, so that's a really big deal. And they began working on the budget for next year. And also looking for quotes for our new phone systems, as we decide what we wanna get. And then preparing for a change on our offside backup service, looking for something that's less expensive to back up our systems. That's it.
Recreation, Mr. Renahan?
Yes, a few things. First of all, they installed some pollinator gardens in four of the parks, at Riddocks Mill, Riverfront, Crown Heights, and Hagentown. So if people see that, that's a new addition down there. As far as the camp going, so far the updates, everything's going well at the camp so far this summer. The Dutch County Board of Health was there, did inspection, and found no findings. They praised how the operations going down there. They also had their first field trip. Eighteen kids went to Peach Hill. They said they had a great time up there. And I saw it somewhere on the Facebook already, I forgot what page it was on there. They're continuing to do works around the various, you know, twenty-one parks that we have inside the town. A lot of work at Stanley Still Park for converting the baseball over to softball field. That's a part of that T-Mobile grant, as well as installing instructional field, you know, T-ball instructional for softball. As well as the highway department's been helping cleaning up there for, you know, for to relocate the playground and future restroom. Other than that, they said all the other fields are working on them, part by part. A lot of baseball field repairs and stuff like that for the summer of baseball. There's a self-defense class for anyone eighteen and older tomorrow at the senior center. That's twenty dollars for residents. There's still time to sign up for, if anybody wants to sign up for that. There's still the concerts going on every Tuesday night at Greenville. Next week, it's Cloud Nine is gonna be there. And they still have some senior trips that are planned for fifty-five and older. Just look at the town website, you know, and, and see what one you might be interested in.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Renahan, fire advisor.
I also saw that the rec department was accepting donations for veterans.
Yes, they were. That's also on the website. Thank you, Ann. Yep, donations for the veterans. There's a whole list on their website to see what, they're looking for what type of donations.
And there's a box located in the front door, right here for them.
Okay.
Mr. Renahan, fire advisor.
No report.
Mr. Carlos.
No report.
Mr. Sefan, personnel.
Nothing to report as far as personnel, but Ann Burger and I will be here Saturday from ten to one. If any town residents have any documents they'd like to get shredded, we'll be here with the shredding truck. And I believe you could bring up to three boxes or bags per carload.
And it's on a first-come, first-served basis. Once the truck is full, we're done. Building consolidation, we're still meeting, and we're going through our due diligence study. We just about got the traffic study finished, and we started going over the traffic study the other day. So we are doing a complete due diligence study on this to make sure if it goes into play, it will work. So hopefully, we'll bring that to fruition soon, to discuss with everybody. And supervisors' report. One of the things I'd like to say is, Dutchess County IDA the other day tried to pass on a pilot for the Champagne Hudson Power Express, which, nobody knows what that is. It's an electrical line coming from Canada, down the middle of the Hudson River, going right between the two intakes to the Joint Water Board, on, down to feed New York City. And it got pulled at the last minute. This would be the first pilot. That would actually be something that was in the water, which, that sounds good, but every municipality along the Hudson River has serious issues with how this is going. And the fact that they will be dredging seven feet into the Florida Hudson River and stirring up whatever's been buried there for years. The Joint Water Board, the town, the city, and Hudson Seven have extreme reservations about how this is going on. So the county stepped in the other day and discussed with the IDA to pull it at this time. And we don't know when it's coming back, but it was a massive amount of money. And again, it's all our money, and this is not giving anything to Dutchess County. The line is going down the middle of the river to the city. All the work will probably be done on a boat, from people that don't live around here. And they're looking for a huge sales tax break and a huge mortgage tax break, on top of, you know, trying to give us a pilot, which would be the first pilot. But taking money from the county and the town to give us money on the other side really doesn't work out. We don't give Central Hudson pilots for any of their, you know, infrastructure that's in the town. We don't give, you know, Verizon or any of them pilots for their infrastructure. And this is definitely something that's not beneficial to us. So just wanted to give everybody, you know, a rest of where we stand with this, and we are, at this point, not in favor of it. There's a lot of other issues, as everybody knows. When we did Central Hudson, when they were doing their, their gas work in the river, that stopped because we were afraid of the water intakes. So the board down there has been very proactive. Hudson Seven's been proactive. Bill has been proactive in making sure that everybody knows what's going on in this project. But our water is one of our most important things the town has. So we take it seriously, and we definitely are not looking to give them any money.
That's ridiculous. They even got on the agenda.
Yeah. The fact that they were gonna give us money is one thing, but millions, I mean, it was millions of dollars that they were gonna get in sales tax and mortgage tax. I don't think would ever make up what any of the towns were gonna get going down the river. So it doesn't mean like.
No.
If it does, it's a wash. So what the heck, if you just give them some of the pilot, it's gonna be a wash.
Right. I agree.
It makes no, no sense whatsoever. And I don't think that cable that's going down the river, any of it, would be manufactured in Dutchess County, or probably even in New York State for that matter, or anywhere along the Hudson River. So I don't see where it was gonna help us at all.
No, I agree.
Yeah. And the county did step up, and they have, right now, it's not on the agenda. That was all I had. Make a motion to suspend rules for anybody that'd like to discuss anything.
Second.
Hold it there.
Hi.
Doreen?
Thank you. So, yeah, Jay, you know, as a lot of you know, I've been attending Dutchess County IDA meetings for nearly three years now, my husband and I. And when I saw that on the agenda for today's meeting, you know, I emailed as many people as I could, you know, environmental groups, Water Board, you know, Jay, you, and, you know, Phil Carlos, and Central Water Board members, and Charlie Amburger, and, you know, it was very disturbing to, to see that. And, you know, they were gonna get probably, I think it was about twenty million in state and mortgage, I mean, sales and mortgage tax, recording exemptions, and probably about a hundred million dollars for pilot, and, and for something that could potentially harm our, our water. So the fact that it even got on the IDA agenda to, to begin with was, was really disturbing. And I'm glad that it was pulled, because, you know, more often than not, the IDA just approves everything that's on their agenda. And at today's meeting, the IDA meeting, the chairman did state that it had been withdrawn for now, and will be discussed perhaps at a future meeting, but for right now, it's tabled. So I'm glad to, to hear that.
Doreen, the only problem, the only problem is, that power line, it's gonna cost a lot of money. It's gonna be really bad. But people are gonna make a fortune. The people that put the money up, build it and own it, it's, it's, it's just craziness in terms of the amount of money. We have to make sure, and thank you, by the way, this morning for letting me know. And as soon as I saw the email, I started my phone calls. We have to be very careful about this. For some reason, businesses think that they're entitled to pilots. They're, they think they're entitled to tax breaks. And here's one, it's millions and millions and millions of dollars, and they're not entitled to anything, as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah. And, and, you know, I've been talking at town board meetings for years about, about pilots. But in this case, it seemed particularly egregious, because it could affect our, our water quality. So, so anyway, and then the other thing that was brought up at the Dutchess County IDA meeting today was a pitch by Dutchess County Planning. They were going over their housing needs assessment study that was just done. And one of the things that it says, you know, that, that the county planning wants to do is to encourage the IDA to start giving out pilots for projects that are all residential. So that has not been the case in the past. And, but they are looking to go forward with that now. And, you know, I realize there's a need for, you know, for apartments, but, you know, again, I don't understand why we need to be subsidizing all of these projects that keep coming forward for, for pilots. And the other thing they said today, Dutchess County Planning, one of the employees said that, that some people complained about apartments, but they, she said that apartments actually pay a higher effective tax rate, as they use less services, and they often provide amenities on-site, like pools and playgrounds, and they take care of their own amenities and roads. So it actually, actually ends up, she said, costing municipalities less for apartments in, in a lot of cases. So, you know, just, just be prepared for this coming forward. And then the last thing I, I wanna bring up is about the comment that Councilman Crackauer said at the last meeting, and I- Krakauer said at the last meeting, and, and I have discussed this with him about these Shacks redevelopment project. And, and again, I, you know, he said that he would give them money to clean up the site. Well, again, effectively, we are giving them money to clean up the site because it's a brownfield, and they're eligible to get ten to twenty-four percent in property tax credits on the total value of the improvement, uh, of the site, not just on the cleanup amount, on the total value of the improvement. So, you know, when, when you said, um, that they would, uh, there would be a pilot with a two percent annual increase, um, I don't know how they came up with the two percent increase, but I would urge you to, to take another look at that, and, again, given the fact that they are taking so, um, much money, um, in state tax credits, I think that, uh, that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. Can't keep giving everybody a pilot, but again, at least it is for, um, affordable housing and workforce housing, but, um, you know, in a case like this, I really think that the two percent, uh, may not be enough.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Doreen, if I could just comment, I do agree with you on a lot of what you said, and, and the pilots, I think, pilots just like residential density, those are things that should be given to projects that warrant it. The project up in the Fourth Ward warrants the, the town, the county, the state, federal government to be involved in that, to clean that up, because it, it is a mess. But as, as a general rule, I, I'm not a big fan of doing pilots for everybody and anybody. The idea that the IDA would subsidize residential, I just read something that with the housing market as tight as it has been, and interest rates going up, the rental rates are going to increase even higher. Subsidizing rental properties doesn't seem to make any sense at all. Like, giving a pilot to somebody that's doing residential doesn't seem to make any sense at all. Um, you, you also, if you build a house, you're going to have a cup one, two, three, God knows how many people living in there, they'll need jobs. To me, the IDA's business was always commercial development and add that commercial component into our, into our communities. So I, sometimes I think people lose their way. The idea that, like, the, you know, the, the apartment building is going to throw more money into the system than a, than a single-family home, I, I don't completely agree with that. And use less services, I, I don't think that makes a lot of sense. And the idea that they'd be pushing residential development over commercial, all these people have to work somewhere. If we do not build out any commercial along the way, everybody hops on the train, goes to the city, and you have a bedroom community, and that's problematic. So I, I agree with a lot of what you said. And while I said I would give, I would pay them to do it, it's not in my end of town, so when we contribute, when we give pilot agreements, it's kind of, we're all collectively giving something. I'm completely comfortable with them getting a better tax deal than the average property owner or developer, because it's a huge need in the Fourth Ward. And that property's got to be cleaned up. It's, it's an embarrassment to, to everybody that that exists, and you look at the project, and it, it's really nice, so...
Could, could I say something? Um, can I add to this conversation?
Go, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Well, there were a number of things that were spoken about this evening, and I, and I have very quick notes on, on each. Um, you guys are, are, everybody's starting to see how the federal and New York State Register and these, um, grants are not always wonderful things. And when we take money from federal block grants, uh, especially, you know, these NGO grants like, um, the one we listened to this evening, Green Business Bureau, which is a consortium connected to the open society, and George Soros, by the way, uh, you know, there are, there are strings attached, and it's meant to actually undermine our local controls. I mean, it's dressed up like climate smart stuff, green stuff, but it's really meant to remove our sovereignty over our city and, and town instead, you know, and then yield to these unelected regional bodies that guilt us to death, and officials, and, and they force these triple bottom-line budgeting for every decision that, uh, that we make. And, you know, when, when you work with an NGO, uh, or a foreign organization, you know, many of them are UN-controlled, under the guise of this climate smart stuff, in exchange for funding, it's really, it's such a bad idea. And I'm not saying that, you know, some federal, uh, you know, federal grants aren't, you know, aren't good, but the, the tendency now is to take our communities and plunder them and do the pack 'em, stack 'em housing, because the initiative is that private ownership of land, of, of property, like single homeowners, it's considered unjust by these UN entities that are going in and trying to change the way our towns and cities look. And that is the overarching thing, that's why a lot of it doesn't seem to make sense. So there's that point. Um, when we start doing all of this, uh, solar energy, again, it comes with smart metering. We need to look at the F eight-seven-six-five, which is a Senate-sponsored bill. It goes into detail about how these smart meters are sickening consumers, and the bill allows consumers to make a choice. So they're not, you know, penalized if they want an analog meter over, you know, the, the digital, um, smart meter that, that hurts us. Um, these smart meters and the antennas, you know, really need to be looked at, uh, for fire advis- the Fire Advisory Committee, because they do have a tendency to burst into flame. I'm laughing, but this is re- kind of scary. So we, we really need to look at that, and so Ann and Jeff, um, should, you know, reads, look at some of the links that I sent, having to do with that. And, um, going over to, um, the technology report, um, Ann and Mike Sefan and, and Sher Shen are on those. Um, there's something happening in California, and, you know, we always tend to follow, not we, but, you know, our government tends to follow California in lockstep. So now what they're doing in California, you do have to have full disclosure when you sell your property, which, you know, people understand, you know, in, in very important matters, but now they're, in California, they're saying, well, if there's an antenna within, you know, a certain, um, distance, you have to report that when, before you sell a property. So I want, I want everybody to look out for the telecoms who will come in and, and start talking about how wonderful stealth antennas are. And that, and, and, you know, the idea would be you hide it from the person that is going to be buying the property, and then you pretend not to know about it. So this, we're punished twice. We're punished once because we have to put up with the RF micro波 radiation, which I for one am sensitive to, and then twice, when we go to sell the property, our property values, you know, can plummet as much as thirty percent when you sell. So there, it, it, this is just, it's so insidious, and it, it does open up the door for these, um, real estate developers who will come in and purchase land at a much lower, uh, price than we would really want to sell it, and, um, you know, they make out, and that's called, you know, the, the reset. That is what the reset is.
All right, Michelle, can you wrap it up?
It's taking the land and using it, yeah, it's taking the land and using it in, in other, uh, in other directions, uh, to, to remove private ownership of, of property. So the last thing I wanted to ask is, um, oh, and, and of course, I'm very disappointed at the ten-fifty Windsor Gate Road approval that was given by our zoning board, and I, I'm, I'm sending out bullets to make sure that you guys understand all the points, uh, that, that, you know, that railed against the, the sense of having done this. So I, I'm very upset about that. And, um, I'm questioning whether at nine-eleven Raymond Avenue, the new antenna that's going to be emitting thirty-five fifty, three thousand five hundred and fifty megahertz, is it going to be in time for Town Day? Because if it is, I, I'm not going for the first time. Um, I won't, I, I can't, I can't. I already feel, you know, unwell when I go to that area of Main and Raymond, and now with another antenna, I, I will be subjecting myself to total exhaustion and fatigue if I stay there more than fifteen minutes.
Thank you, Michelle.
Uh, and that's what happens to me. So is that antenna going to be up, uh, before...
I would not, I would not know that answer, Michelle, we have to call downstairs. We don't follow.
All right. Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
And, and thank you for the, to the Central Hudson Seven, uh, not Central Hudson, but Hudson Seven. Thank you, Bill, so much. Bye.
Is there anybody else? Make a motion, resume the rules. Second. All the favor.
Aye.
Being resolved, the Town Board of Towne de Kipsey does hereby adjourn to executive session to consider the following, to discuss matters which are exempt under open meeting law, including matters subject to attorney-client privilege, and be further resolved that no action in appropriate money will be taken, some of them.
Motion, second, all the favor.
Aye.
Town Board goes to executive session, eight forty PM.